Roll call for this city council meeting of Wednesday, August 2nd, 2017 at 9:00 AM. Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, I would ask that we remember during this time of silent meditation, those that are less fortunate than we are in our local community as well as our global community. We ask that we remember those who have lost loved ones and all those traumatized by the violence that we've experienced in our community and again around the country. Also, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information so that we can make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval minutes from the meeting of Wednesday, June 19th, and bills for payment on July 28th and August 4th, 2017. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski.
Is it time for our mayor?
Yes.
As is customary during the time of year, we're going to hear from our mayor today on the state of the city, and we hope he brings good news like he usually does. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Mr. President, council members, Madam Controller, good morning. Today I present you with the 2017 mid-year financial report for the city of Erie. The figures in this report continue to reflect the stability in municipal operations and cost control, as well as the advantages of the transparent budget and spending system we have developed and implemented. It shows the continued commitment of all departments to stay within budgetary constraints, find new efficiencies, and keep our operations affordable to the taxpayers. Once again, all of our department heads, bureau chiefs, and employees, many of which are in the room today, are to be commended for their vigilance in these areas. As you're aware from the discussions at each of the monthly finance committee meetings, the stability of our operation has allowed us to keep the cost of doing business within budget throughout the past eleven and a half years. We have done so by finding new operational savings to minimize the impact of annual increases in the cost of operating each of our departments. Because of our success in redesigning the way we do business, we've avoided the consequences of insolvency and long-term financial distress. This model is reflected in the numbers you will review in the body of this report. As you look at the details, you will find that the total revenue projections are below the budgeted amounts, with individual line items varying according to the different circumstances that have arisen thus far this year. However, as in most of the years, the revenue catches up to budgeted amounts and have routinely exceeded budgeted figures by year-end. The report also shows significant savings on the expenditure side. This is the result of continually working to find additional savings in every area of the operation. Vigilance of the department heads, bureau chiefs, and managers has proven effective, and over the years, we have managed to save our taxpayers millions of dollars. In total, we're projecting a final budgetary surplus this year of $325,923. This is, however, only a projection and could deviate substantially depending on the events of the second half of the year. As you review this report, you will see that all departments are expected to again meet their target budgets. This shows that we have been able to determine the true cost of doing business, budget accordingly, and manage our operation in order to stay within the expected expenditures. This is a pledge that we, as an administration and council, promised our taxpayers eleven and a half years ago. We have fulfilled that promise each and every year. Our projections are only estimates but are based on the trends we have seen throughout the course of this administration. By analyzing these trends and using the information and formulating our budgets, we've created a system which has yielded minimal budget surpluses each of the years of the administration, and this year should be no different. My staff and I will be available to address any questions you may have after you've had the opportunity to digest this information. I thank you for your ongoing support of the administration as we work together to make Erie a strong, financially vibrant community. We will continue on our mission to make Erie a model for cities of how they can succeed despite the challenges facing all communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody have a comment?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mersky.
I just wanted to thank the mayor for the mid-year report. This is excellent news that we are on track, and it shows that through my tenure on council and through your administration, that we've been fiscally responsible and we have managed our expenses and really tried to minimize the impact to the taxpayers as much as possible. And so, I just want to thank you for this mid-year report. We will be reviewing it at our finance meeting next month, and then we'll come if anyone has any individual questions, they can ask those. Thank you.
Any other member of council?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr.?
As Mr. Mersky stated, and as we often say and do around a mid-year report, we will digest it and metabolize it and all those things, right? Just maybe a little more, a little different comment has been, what, eleven, I think eleven of these that I've sat here and watched you and your administration, twelve of these. Yeah, it's number twelve, if you're counting, right? And we've had some very challenging times since 2006, when you literally walk in and you find a box of bills worth a million-plus dollars, a literal box of unpaid bills, to having to lay off and let go police and fire, having to sit through sessions with police officers, holding their daughter, who's two, who now dead, doesn't have a job, and being, you know, as close as you can get without going into Act 47, which is municipal bankruptcy. Things aren't perfect. We've got a lot of social challenges, a lot of community issues we need to continue to deal with, much longer after I'm on council and you're in the mayor's office, and any of us, but if nothing else, we've at least figured out how to at least be stable financially. And now, the next step is to, for those coming after us, to kind of take it forward. Like, I think we've righted the ship, and we got it in the right direction. Now, it's time for somebody to put a motor to it and get it moving forward. But they don't have to do the work of dealing with the state for ten years and doing all those processes. So, I want to, from someone who's been here every one of those twelve years, give the respect to yourself and your administration, and the variety of people that have been in the administration over the last twelve years for the work that they've done to make it so that we have some financial stability, even though we don't have a bunch of access, but we're also not in Act 47, which is like the black hole of never getting out of, you know, municipal bankruptcy. So, again, just wanted to thank you for that, and we will continue to do it one more time, go through this and ask the questions that are appropriate. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, and if I could just make a quick comment. As I said in my report, this is something that we, as an administration and council, had promised our taxpayers twelve years ago. And as I've said throughout my administration, this wasn't just the administration, this was the administration and council. We had a lot of good people on council throughout this period of time, including right now, that have been very supportive, very helpful, especially as Mr. Jones talked about some of those very lean and difficult times. There was a lot of very hard decisions that needed to be made, and we would not have been able to do that without the support of council. And so, we've been very fortunate to have that. Mr. Kwiatowski was the controller through a lot of those times and was very helpful in that capacity as well. So, it hasn't been a singular effort. It's been, you know, I'm fortunate enough to have a very good team, a lot of very good administrators within the operation that know, that are experts in their various fields, which has been very helpful. But again, the support of the elected officials over the years in every, in every office in this administration, and our current controller as well, not to exclude you in any way, Teresa, because you've been helpful over the last few years that you've been here as well, has been the key to all of it. So, I have to reciprocate and say thank you to all of you and everyone who's sat up there on that dais and have been in the different elected capacities as well.
Any other member of council?
I'd like to thank you, Mayor. I've been through four finance directors and two mayors, and like to say publicly that even though we've had our disagreements over the years, like all people do, this has been the most transparent that I've ever seen it in my, as of my role of controller at the time, or as a council member. And it was refreshing that usually anytime I needed Paul, I had him at, he was pretty quick. And, you know, we got a lot of things solved, and that's unusual sometimes. And like Curtis said, I think the fact that, you know, we had monthly, we met regularly and been kept up to date, it helps council make the tough decisions that we have to. And we are a team because, you know, administration can propose, but we have to dispose, and that, it's a lot nicer when you're dealing with people like Paul and Ron before him. So, I want to thank you, and hopefully, you know, this is a good barometer for the future, and we continue with whatever new administration there is that these things keep happening. But thank you once again.
Great, thank you.
there to speak on repository sales? If there is, please step up, state your name and address, and what you plan on doing with the property, and the property in question also.
Good morning, distinguished council. My name is Dwayne Durham. My family and I own a double duplex at 642 East Fourth Street. Due to a recent fire several years ago, the two adjacent properties, homes burned down, leaving two lots. They've been barely maintained. We've kept them under a bit of control, but having no rights to really get on that property. There are what I call weed trees, weeds like the sumac that grow up to be big as trees and become a nuisance, and add nothing of value to the property. And along the fence lines, those things can be a nuisance to adjoining properties. My family and I intend, if we're pleasured with the ownership, to cut those trees, weed trees, down, manage the trees that are on that, that do beautify, and to maintain the properties in good and acceptable order in the summer and winter, even though my residence is not here full-time. I have people here who will manage, according to my desire and the city's code, all the necessary things that need to be done. I was four years in the military as a barracks chief. Anybody know what a barracks chief is? He's a person who's required to make sure everybody else's stuff is in order. I didn't ask for the job, but it was mine to do or die. I feel that way about properties next to me. If I have the opportunity to own that property, it will be maintained. You'll hear nothing about it, except for tax time, and we'll take care of that, too. We will enhance the neighborhood, we will manage the property, and in conclusion, I'd like to recite the Gettysburg Address. Thank you very much.
Please stay up there a minute, sir.
I can't run out now?
No, we don't let you off that easy.
Mr. President?
Yes?
If I could, first of all, thank you for your service, and I had no idea what your assignment was, but I was sure Mr. Kwiatowski was going to give us a tutorial.
As long as he was Army, I'm happy.
So, again, in all seriousness, and first and foremost, thank you for your service, and thank you for your willingness and your family to continue to maintain and take ownership of the properties.
Yes.
Did you have, right now, there are just lots. Are you, or do you all have any plans on putting structures on them in the future, or as of right now, just open space?
No, sir.
Okay.
It'll make a safer place for the kids to live because people coming by seeing weeds and stuff, they throw bottles and other trash. I've found that if a neighborhood is better maintained, they tend to do that less.
The expectation is higher.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anybody else? Mr. President? Yes, Mr. Mersky.
I just want to do, thank you for taking care of those properties while they aren't in your possession, and I think this is a good use of the property, and thank you for stepping up and helping out the Lower East Side.
Thank you.
Any other councilperson?
We won't be voting on this today, but at later meeting, we will be. I want to thank you for renovating the neighborhood because we need more people like you to step up.
Sure, sir.
And thank you for your service and Army.
Hey, it still counts, Cass. Don't try.
It still counts, I know. He knows what we're talking about. Inter-service relationships are.
We all work together.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll probably vote on this, like I say, next meeting, so you'll be notified.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anybody else to speak on a repository?
I'm James Arrington, my wife Mary Arrington. We live there, 911 East 21st Street, and we'd like to purchase the property next to our lot on 21st and 901. And so, we can fence it in, clean it up, because right at the present time, the weeds is like a feet high as we speak now. And I used to take care of it all the time, but the city's been taking care of it for the last two weeks, but they only did it twice this year. And I like to fence it in, clean it up, keep it clean, to make the neighborhood cleaner and have a safe place for my kids, grandkids, and great-grandkids to play.
Any member of council?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones?
Again, just want to recognize your willingness to be, you know, a good neighbor, a good community member, and taking care of that property the way you were before the city was regularly. And again, thank you for taking ownership and for wanting to beautify our community. Now, I'm not sure how big that lot is. Is it, you are just planning on keeping it a lot as of right now and having it for the children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, which is a beautiful thing, the great-grandchildren. So, that's what you're going to, that's all you're planning on doing with it for now?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other member of council? Is there a house on that property now or not?
No, it's not.
When I looked at the picture, it looked like, it wasn't a great picture, so I just was asking.
There was two houses there, and both of them got burned down, and mine was next door to it.
Okay.
Two years ago, I purchased this 907 lot right next to mine, and the other lot is next to 907, and the weeds just started growing up. I used to cut all the grass to make mine look better, you know, but now, the city come out and they only cut it twice a year, and it's about a feet and a half now, grown up.
Okay, thank you. Well, like I said, the other gentleman, we'll be voting on this at a later meeting. Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else to speak on a repository? Step forward, please.
Morning.
Good morning.
Thank you all for having me. My name is Walt Porter. I live at 534 East 26th Street. The last forty years or so, some of you on, I know a little bit up there. But my problem is, it's 534, the next block, or next house to my house is 538. I don't understand that. But anyway, I'm not going there. But that's the problem we got a problem with. I've been doing the grass the last fifteen years or more, keeping the snow plowed off, whatever, but we haven't messed with the neighbors. They keep dumping stuff, and I don't know what you do. I would get a dumpster a couple of times a year and get some crap out of there, whatever, you know? And I wasn't aware of this process that you guys had, that you could have so much time you could get on it, but I had no idea. I mean, I don't know. But my problem is, I parked my car on this lot, hoping that maybe they would see that and respect it and wouldn't dump stuff, you know? Then I get a ticket, you got to move, you can't leave it on. I said, Jesus Christ. I can't win, you know? But anyway, I'm here now on behalf of that, and that's why I'm here, you know, and trying. And I keep the grass cut. You know, I didn't know that you had a process here. The grass got to be ten inches high before you can complain about it. I don't understand, what kind of rule is that? I mean, Jesus, ten inches high? Sorry. Anyway, we're not going to keep cutting the grass, and I'm not going to change that, so I just want to give you, you know.
But any other questions from councilmen?
Mr. President, sir, what's the address?
534 East 20, oh, this is 538.
538.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, next door to me. How could it be 530? Should be 536. But I ain't going there.
Smarter people than me figure that stuff out. But what is it, 538 what's the street?
26.
East 26.
East 26, yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mersky.
So, you just intend to maintain the property as like a backyard to your property, or is it adjacent?
Adjacent, yes.
I'm all confused now. Okay, because of the numbering. So, you just want to maintain it and make it part of your property?
I keep it up. I'm not going to quit it. I'm always continuing to keep it up, make it look nice. Make my house look nice if I make it look nice.
Absolutely. Thank you for doing that, but then it'd be yours.
Well, I just hope I can do something with my body, put a fence across the back of it so people stop just driving on it, and just, Jesus, it's disrespectful, you know?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, thank you for stepping forward, and I'm sorry you got a parking ticket. I wish I knew the reason.
That's all right.
I got people parking my field all night long, nobody gets a ticket.
No tickets, huh?
Nope, and I tell you, I agree with you. When you have a field next to your house, bad news.
It is, it is. And everybody knows it's not yours, so they just dump everything.
And they usually come out from south of the city line, too. That's what really bugs me.
Some of that stuff is not from the city. It comes from the county, I think.
Yeah.
Well, I shouldn't say that.
I'd like to haul it back over the line, but, thank you, though. Okay, moving on, is there, oh, is there anybody else with repository sales? Anybody else with repository sales? One last time, anybody else to address a repository sale? Hearing none, we'll move on to citizens to be heard. Do we have anybody signed in, Rose?
Yes, Freda is first and then Mel.
Okay.
I've already given my address, so do I need to do that again? Freda Tepfer, 1738 West 23rd Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. So, I was not at the last council meeting, however, I did listen to the YouTube of Mr. Carley's comments concerning the denial of an appeal to the PUC. The tone of Mr. Carley's comments and the nature of what he said, I found very disturbing. Perhaps I misinterpreted what he said. It sounded like he said that, given the letter from the PUC, you could dismiss all of Mr. Trotz's, which by connection would be Erie CPR's, comments as inappropriate. I have also received a copy of the same letter because I was part of the group of people who originally received materials from the PUC. What I want for you to understand is all of the objections that the PUC raised to Mr. Trotz's appeal were procedural and jurisdictional. None of them were substantive. None of them addressed our actual concerns with one exception. They addressed the fact that we did not have a lawyer, even though we were a nonprofit organization, and they said that the things that were being raised were not within the jurisdiction of the PUC. The one substantive issue that they did raise was they said that, in fact, there had been an alternative which considered maintaining the existing viaduct for pedestrian-only use. And in fact, that's not true. I scoured over the alternatives in the document last night. There was no alternative which looked at maintaining and rehabilitating the existing viaduct for pedestrian-only use. There was an alternative that looked at demolishing the viaduct and building a brand-new pedestrian-only bridge, so that was not true, that statement in the letter. The demolition or rehabilitation of the viaduct, neither of those, or let's just say, the rehabilitation of the viaduct in its existing position for pedestrian-only use would not prevent or change the ability of the project to address the need to get people to stop running across the Bayfront Connector. That can be addressed in a number of ways, and in fact, demolishing or retaining the viaduct has nothing to do with putting in an interchange at Buffalo Street, an on-grade crossing, which in fact is being done by PennDOT. So, retaining the viaduct does not impair that. They talk about significant deterioration of the bridge, and in fact, that relates to load-bearing capacity, and the functional obsolescence does not relate to maintaining the bridge in its pedestrian-only use. The height of the viaduct over the railroad tracks is seven meters, and that should be more than adequate for the maximum heights allowed by CSX. The alternative talked about the construction of cul-de-sacs and other improvements, and according to a letter that I received from Mr. Tushak, says there will be minimum improvements on East Avenue under the bridge, and at the intersection of East 12th and East Avenue, the scope of these items had to be reduced to fit the available funds. The primary objectives of the purpose and need will be met within the available budget. Therefore, a lot of the items addressed under urban improvements are not going to be done. Another item mentioned in the letter was PennDOT saying PennDOT was not involved in the project, and I would actually question that. I received an email on July 14th from Thomas Alcorn telling me that the design field view was submitted, was received from the consultant on 62617, and is currently, was reviewed by the district office and is now under review by the Harrisburg Office of PennDOT. If, in fact, it was sole project of the city of Erie, that would not be happening. Also, the purpose of the need identified, the report would be submitted to PennDOT and Federal Highways for approval, and in the alternatives, it mentions that first, PennDOT and the Federal Highways had to approve the project, so that was a misstatement. I also received an email from Thomas Alcorn of PennDOT explaining that all of the monies owed by the city related to the original study have been paid, and there is no obligation to the city anymore related to the study. Just trying to correct misinformation. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one other citizen that wrote in, Mr. Himes.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, administration, city clerk, and of course, I want to say treasurer, not treasurer. I can't think right now. I'm a little bit wobbly. Controller, I'm sorry. Main reason why I'm here to speak is about Roar on the Shore. I got some good points, and I got some bad points. I'll get to the bad points first. I was down around the main stage on Wednesday night. Roar on the Shore didn't even really start yet, but they brought this, may I say, I'm going to call it that, devil worshippers in up on the stage, and the remarks that was made, I wouldn't have anybody around that. That just made me so upset, I had to go to the emergency room afterwards. You know, I'm not the most religious person in the world, I'm a Catholic, but I do things that are wrong, too. But that is just evil, 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 what they were saying and singing. I just don't go for that. I don't care for heavy metal, a lot of people don't. It's just disgusting. They were, I'm not even, I can't even say what they said, but a lot of exploits about women's body parts, men's body parts, the devil, the devil's offspring, stuff like that, and then a high-ranking city official was standing right there, and they let that go on. I just don't- I just don't believe that kind of thing should be going on. We're trying to make money for the city, yes, but no wonder we get punished. You know, like I said, I'm not the most religious person. God watches what's going on. He knows what you do. But on a good part, I was down there on Thursday night, and I'm not a motorcycle guy. I'm not, far from it. I'm an antique car guy. I like my antique cars. Everybody has a place in this world, you know, and everybody has a place in this town. They have the right to show their stuff, I say. But well-behaved people on, I didn't go any more other than Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday. I, what I saw and heard, family atmosphere, I met a lot of friends from the school district I used to work with and families and that, I was well pleased with that. But I don't know what happened the rest of the weekend or anything like that. I know we need the money, and it is a good thing, but I just can't see what they're doing. That stuff shouldn't be allowed in public. They wanna do that, let them go on a field someplace, in a farm or something, and get all together. And people were getting off on that other stuff, too, and I, just disgusting, disgusting. That's all I have to say about Roar on the Shore. One other thing, and I'll make it quick. I'd like to thank Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Vanarsky, and Mr. Mursky for helping me out. We had some real problems in my neighborhood, and it fell on deaf ears with the administration. Nobody would even talk to me, especially in code enforcement, and I hope they clean house when the new administration comes in, no matter who it be. You guys got to work on it and took care of things, and some actions being taken. I appreciate the council, and I appreciate everybody that works hard for the city. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Heims. I did receive some complaints from certain citizens in the Richford Arms, which was to be expected, about the volume of music, not about the lyrics, but maybe it's something in the future we could either think about moving the stage or... We created that problem when we put the elderly and the people that live in those apartments there, but, I mean, that's the only comments I had from the public. Anybody else, or?
Mr. President, just as the next citizen's coming, just to say and remind people that although it's hosted at downtown Erie, that Roar on the Shore is a Manufacturers Association event that they organize and plan and bring entertainment in on, and so as much as we may agree or disagree with Mr. Heims' statements and others, another, maybe more direct place to vent some of those concerns as far as acts and structure would be the Manufacturers Association, as well as us as City Hall, because again, it is a Manufacturers Association-sponsored, planned, organized event partnered with the city. So just a little more information for citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
We're not gonna open this up to any citizen, so step up to the mic, please, and...
Hello, my name's Art Leopold, 5341 Apple Grove Lane, Erie, PA. Honorable council persons, gentlemen, gentlelady, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm compelled to rise again, as I did in June, to speak about reversing mass incarceration and our possible local part in decriminalizing marijuana. Since I spoke with you last in June, I have called each one of you and left you messages indicating that I offer my help, my assistance, to gain information, to gain what you need to move further on this issue. I've also sent you an email, most recently, from the York Dispatch. You will find that Philadelphia, last October 2014, decriminalized marijuana, followed by Pittsburgh in April 2016, followed by Harrisburg, followed by State College, and most recently, York, Pennsylvania, as of July 18th, 2017, has decriminalized marijuana, and that is reducing the criminalization of the finding of marijuana, limited amounts of marijuana, on individuals. The effect of this is to reduce the mass incarceration rate locally, and there are many, many cities throughout the United States now that have followed suit on this. I was a little dismayed to find that now we can only be the sixth city to do so. Too bad we weren't the first, but I understand how these things go. So I again wanted to bring this to your attention, that this is a matter of urgency. Urgency because there's young men and young women that are being picked up for minor drug offenses, that now, under the criminal code, their lives are ruined. They can't rent affordable housing, they can't get student loans. There are many social ills that fall upon them because of this effect, and this is something that is within our control to do. Now, we can't legalize it locally, but I'm happy to report to you today that there is, as of yesterday, the Marijuana Justice Act that Senator Cory Booker has introduced on the federal level that will decriminalize marijuana nationwide. The bill legalizes marijuana on the federal level, allows people in prison for marijuana-related crimes to be resentenced, and automatically expunges federal marijuana use and possession So I know there isn't anything we can do about that locally, but what we can do is save young lives. Your power, your ability to do so, others have done it. I presented you with a sample ordinance. I'm willing to do what we can to help. I've now had other groups step forward to offer assistance. I have a letter here from Kate Kaylee of Erie County United, a local union advocacy group that states just the same, and I'd like to present that to City Council. Thank you so much. So this will not end until it ends to help save young lives. Most of this occurs in youth. You all been young at one time. You all have kids. I have grandkids, I have a great-granddaughter. I want to see justice for all. You have it within your power. So I once again, rising to ask that you do something about this.
Good morning, Mr. President, City Council. My name is Gary Horton, 2046 East 19th Street. I stand here this morning to applaud the city and the other taxing bodies for reaching an agreement and compromise on the Erie Insurance tax issue. That success demonstrates and proves that compromise works and agreements can be reached to benefit both sides and the interests of all people. On the issue of inclusion of all people in public and private development, community benefit agreements, or CBAs as they are labeled, are such a vehicle to be utilized here in Erie as an opportunity to give hope to the people in the neighborhoods. With the support of the city and the Erie School District, St. James AME Church, we at the UECDC, EF Smith Quality of Life Learning Center, and the Erie Housing Authority are developing a labor pool to pre-train and qualify local neighborhood people. Gannon, Erie Insurance, EMTA, PennDOT, and others have ongoing projects. We don't see any minorities in any of those projects working. We cannot determine if the hundreds of workers are even local people from Erie. If that is a fact, then that is a problem. And it compounds the problems and challenges of hopelessness and unrest and fuels feelings of no opportunity by local minorities and our youth. Inclusion is a part of the solution to be included. Community benefit agreements represent an opportunity. I pray and humbly request that you all give your voice and support to this approach. The new NAACP believes that this is the path to unity in our community and a way to build trust through hope and opportunity. Immediate assistance to existing community-based organizations that have assets to leverage, assistance to aspiring entrepreneurs, and neighborhood residents. Please add your voice to our efforts and the efforts of Erie United. Mr. John Goldstein visited Erie at the invitation of the Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority and the Jefferson Society, and has been, I guess, mentoring our efforts to get community-based or to get community benefit agreements launched here in Erie. I spoke at the last meeting about when people come before you for a zoning change or a street closing, these are examples of a perfect opportunity to engage in that. I have, and I'll leave with you, copies of the latest newsletter Mr. Goldstein and his organization puts out about community-based, about community benefit agreements. If you have any questions regarding that, any further discussion on that, I am available to do that. Thank you for your time and attention, and God bless you. And give these to the...
Thank you, Mr. Horton.
Good morning, everyone. Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street, second floor. I have handouts for reference. I don't know if council was given a copy of the PUC final decision that was rendered on July 12th. We didn't even know that they were having such a hearing. But to augment what Freda said about that act, it had very little to do with our issues about the viaduct. We had explained all our issues in our appeal, and most of their response was outside our jurisdiction. Cost outside our jurisdiction other than if it incurs costs to the PUC, which they clarified in their decision here, they are paying nothing. The city of Erie is paying all of it, so that's an easy one for them. They clarify in here, and it's highlighted, that their sole discretion in this, this action was approved in the interest of the safety of the public, which, in their words, means two things, as I understand it. One is that it does no harm to utilities, which is their jurisdiction, which it does not, and is there anything wrong with this action that would make it less safe for the public in regards to direct public safety? That is strictly the procedure of demolition. Is the demolition work going to cause hazard? Well, no, because safety precautions are being implemented. It does nothing to address safe routes to school, general public safety of getting between point A and point B. It doesn't do any of that. They even say, and I highlighted it in here, that they do not extend their jurisdiction to transportation planning. All that stuff is beyond their realm. We didn't know that until we filed the request for an appeal, and then it was clarified. So any characterization beyond the fact that they're not paying anything and they don't see any danger in the demolition project is a mischaracterization of what the PUC is doing here. And I'd like to suggest, in the bigger picture of things, before you guys voted to approve this project, you were told, "It's too late, it's already done." And here we are, August of 2017, two and a half years after that approval, and they're still working on it. It was never too late. That keeps being a mischaracterization. The other thing that's significant is, and Freda touched upon it, they had grossly misedimated what it would take for this deal to be palatable to the city. They said it was 1.2. On the eve, it turned into almost twice that, at 2.3. Now it's sitting between 2.3 and 2.4 is all the money they can get, but the city admitted, they now think it's a $4 million project. The PUC said 4.5 million, and the city's response is, "Well, that's other stuff to have to do with the demolition, but it's not the demolition." Actually, it's part of the agreement that the project was approved on, that to do everything you promised, it's 4.5 million, and the city says, "We don't have it, so we're gonna cut what we promised." And when they're cutting their promise upon which you had approved the project, that's a breach of agreement, and this, the whole thing should be opened right up. We should stop wasting money. I mean, you're, the money is 800,000 or more on engineering and legal work for a $1.2 million debt. You'll never get the 800,000 back in reinvestment in the city, but if we spend 3 million to rehab the bridge, now you've invested in that area and you get it working as it's working today with better connectivity. So it baffles me as to what the motivation is from the administration to keep pushing this project and ignoring the facts. It says, and I highlighted a couple of times in this document, "The city requested no public hearing, expedite, get it through, get it done, we want this thing to go away." They've never explained why. The alternative study severely flawed. We've gone through that, those details with you in the past. So I'm left here wondering, why are you so desperate to take this thing down? The area needs that bridge, and it can do jobs, the kind of jobs Gary Horton just talked about, life-sustaining wage jobs of fixing that bridge. And instead, you wanna pay an out-of-town guy to take it down. So I again request that you rescind your approval, and let's reevaluate this project. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, council members. Mr. President, Mayor's Office, Jill and Solicitor Carley. I've got a question, and I've got an update to provide. I was under the impression that we're gonna have our first reading of the rezoning ordinance today, and it's not on the agenda. That's my question, my first question.
We're going to waive the rules and vote on it. So we will be, stick around, and we will be voting on it.
Okay. Second, I'd like to provide an update. We recently had an approval by the company to move forward, once the zoning is approved, to construct, reconstruct, actually, two timber-framed houses that have historical significance that'll create six apartment units. Each house has a carriage house, and that'll be moving forward yet this year, hopefully, pending the approval of the rezoning. And we have an architecture firm in the, standing in the wings to begin master planning for the, for the area. Any questions?
Any councilman wanna comment?
Thank you for the update, and I wanna tell you that I did tour the area in question, and I appreciate what you're doing now, and appreciate what you're gonna do in the future.
You know, one quick bit of history. In 1915, the Mill Creek Flood eliminated all the houses down through that valley, and all the houses that were rebuilt in 1924 were rebuilt on top of poor soils from the filling of Mill Creek itself, as well as the Mill Creek Tube. So every one of those houses that we, we took down had settlement issues. We managed to save two of them, and they still have settlement issues, but, you know, they had some historical significance, and that adds to about seven houses that we've reconstructed and managed to save over the last five years.
Hello, I'm Martha Wachuku, 320 West Ave Street, Apartment 203. Hello, councilpeople. I just wanted to speak very briefly in support of Mr. Horton and creating a community or a city where community benefit agreements become culture. I know today you're voting on allowing Erie Insurance to rezone and... I know today you're voting on allowing Erie Insurance to rezone an area of land and I wanted just to voice my opinion on having it so that in the future, when you guys make these kinds of decisions, having community members aware of like what exactly they're rezoning for and keeping in mind the people who are going to live around there when they start building, how it's going to affect them as well as keeping in mind the people they hired to build these things and such. So I just wanted to come up here and support Mr. Horton. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? One last time, are there any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none? Rose?
All right. Ordinances for first reading. Council File 15999. An ordinance authorizing an increase in the non-electoral debt of the city of Erie, Erie County, Pennsylvania by authorizing and approving the issuance and sale of 5,225,000 general obligation notes, Fretto taxable series A of 2017 and 5,245,000 general obligation notes, tax-exempt series B of 2017 for the purposes recited herein in directing the city clerk to prepare, certify, file the required debt statement and to take all other necessary action. By Mrs. Arrington and seconded by Mr. Jones, the Council File Ordinance Number 15999, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. City Council read and adopts Council File Ordinance Number 15999 by A7, Nay Zero, on first reading. And we'll go into new business, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any separations?
Yes, I'd like to separate number one.
Number one? Under new business, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would like to separate item number two.
Under new business?
Under new business.
Gotcha. Anybody else with any separations? Hearing none so far. We have just separations number one and two under new business.
Right. Okay, moving the balance of the agenda. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. By Mrs. Arrington, seconded by Mr. Brennan, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that Veronica Wexford of Erie PA is hereby appointed to the Erie Sewer Authority to fill the vacancy of John Vincent, whose term will expire December 31st, 2021. Discussion?
The reason why I separated, her last name is spelled wrong. It should be a R instead of a W. Rexford.
Rexford, thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Okay, then roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Jones, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are authorized and directed to designate a portion of Monroe Street between East 26th and East 28th Streets as Reverend Allen B. Green Way in honor of Allen Burnett Green's service and dedication to the city of Erie and the Second Baptist Church. He served as senior pastor and manor for 37 years. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I did separate this just to make comment. A lot of time, we comment about a lot of things, but this is one of the things that are, that I think is important to recognize, the, the many community gifts that we have in, in the city of Erie and in the region. Reverend Green was not just a pastor or a gentleman in our city, which would have been good enough, a good citizen, but he's helped really shape the lives of many, many, many people in our community over the last almost 40 years. Former, you know, a, a veteran and served in the military in this country, comes back and, and answers a call of ministry to serve people. And as we know, any of us that are in the people business or the serving of people as your business, it is very challenging to do that. You can give people exactly what they ask for and they say, "I didn't like the way you gave it to me." And ministry is one of those absolute examples of that. But Reverend Green has exemplified mentorship, eldership, an excellent example of a community servant. And he's come outside of the walls of his church for many, many years and continued to serve even through physical illness and physical challenge. I describe him as a community resource because many people don't know that he was more than just a pastor of the church right there by my middle school alma mater, Wilson, but he's a theologian, a nationally recognized author and theological mind in this country that often the city of Erie hasn't recognized him in that, in that capacity and at that level. So as he is continuing to move on and live life at the highest level possible, we, I'm honored to be a part of a council that is going to move forward to recognize someone like Reverend Green for his service. And I think it's, it's definitely, to name the street at the, next to the, the place where he served for so many years, I think it's just really a fitting tribute to him. And it's beautiful to be able to give people flowers while they can smell them. That's what the old folks used to say, we come to the funeral or something, "Give me my flowers while I can smell them." Well, give me a street named after me while I can drive down it, right? And Reverend Green is definitely one of those individuals who deserves that honor. And again, I'm just honored to be a part of a council and have seconded something that would bring this onto our agenda. And I think it's due to recognize former councilwoman, Mrs. Ruby Jenkins' husband, as a, as a community servant, but also someone who was absolutely behind pushing and promoting this in our community. I want to take the thunder of Mr. Witherspoon, because I know this was his, his resolution, but I definitely am again honored to be a part of that. So we should celebrate people while they can still experience the celebration and honor people and give honor to whom honor is due. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mel, what do you want to say here? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well said, Councilman Jones. Thank you.
I love you, Mel. Short but sweet. Mushy. Go ahead, Rose.
All right, roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. And we have a waive rules, Mr. President.
Yes, I, yes, Rose.
Okay, this is the Erie Insurance rezoning. This was a late entry. The voting on waiving the rules, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. By Mr. Brennan, Council File 15600. An ordinance amending official ordinance number 80202005, known as the zoning ordinance of the city of Erie by changing the classification of the property located at East Fourth to East Fifth Street in the middle of the 200 block, East to Parade Street, East Fifth to East Sixth Street from the middle of the 200 block, East to German Street, where it will abut existing residential limited business and commercial zones, and the south side of East Sixth Street from German Street to East to Commercial Zone of Parade Street. This would include any, only the properties facing East Sixth Street currently classified as R2 medium density residential to that of RLB residential limited business. By Mr. Brennan, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, the Council File Ordinance Number 15600, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Just wanted to say, I am in agreement, just take a moment to, to make a comment in relation to citizens who have brought up the issue and the concern of community benefit agreements. I absolutely agree with that, that, that concept. I'm not sure how we structure that and it would be great to have more conversation around that. It's been the conversation for some time. Hopefully we can get some traction on institutionalizing, as the young lady said, making it a part of the culture of how we do business in relation to projects that could have impact on the community, such as this and many others. So, so I, I just wanted to kind of make that comment, that this is a, this would be a good example of what that looks like and how we could utilize that in a lot of different ways, or that concept in a lot of different ways. The other thing though, as I've been doing over the last year, is whenever we're talking about rezoning and significant businesses and entities and individuals who have high business acumen, high business reputation, high level of resources, high national, international recognition for the things that they do, i.e. Erie Insurance, right? They're investing in the part of the city that everybody else is saying is not worth very much. And I want to keep highlighting that because we have people who have lived in the Lower East Side for families of generations, people who are more transient and rent and move in and out. And we are constantly saying on this high level or this media level or this kind of upfront public level that this is an area of the city that's horrible, but Fortune 500 companies are investing their money in it. And so I think it's important if we really want to make our community great and better, as, as good as it can be, because right now we're not great. We're not horrible, but we're not great and we're not at our highest level. And so we, we recognize and should recognize that people who do market studies and market research and, and assess communities are investing where we see little value. We should hopefully look at that and, and see that there's a reason why they're willing to invest money and invest generations of money in that space and do the same. Places that we take for granted, other people are absolutely seeing as priceless. And so I just want to take a moment to highlight that and to say, I, again, the three gentlemen that came with their families and want to reinvest in the city, some of those areas were in that general area. I, I think it's important that we take another look and we have to invest in downtown, we have to do our comprehensive plan work, we have to do all the things that we're doing, lower Bayfront, West Bayfront, all that stuff. But let's not forget, they always say follow the money. There's a lot of money in the Lower East Side being invested and we should figure out why and how to be a part of that and how to maximize that. So I am voting in favor of this with those two caveats for conversation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Brennan.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I wanted to thank the representatives from Erie Insurance that came today to give us a little bit of an update on what their plans are. I know there was questions that I received from a few residents about the, what's going to go on there. So I'm sure as the plans are further developed and solidified, we'll hear more positive news for that area of the city. And I again just wanted to thank them for their transparency. Thank you.
Any other member before we continue to vote?
Thank you. Just following up with my colleagues here, I want to thank Erie Insurance for being a partner, not only for the city of Erie, but the citizens of Erie. They, they have a vision with redevelopment, with job creation, expansion, and it doesn't take hard to look around. They don't mess around. I mean, the project, the $114 million project across the street there is moving strong and quickly. And we got to appreciate that they have a vision to invest in this town that we believe in also. So along with that comes additional tax dollars. We always got to remember that. It's one thing Erie Insurance does, they pay their taxes. And I know we had a little tax bump in the road there, which I don't blame Erie Insurance whatsoever for seeing if they could lower their taxes, just like the regular citizen would do. But I'm glad they came to a nice conclusion and we worked together with the city, with the school district and the taxing bodies, and they did it in a good manner. But once again, thank you, Erie Insurance, for being a partner.
Any other member? I'd like to say, Rose, before we continue. I toured the project right after the last meeting. I wanted to see for myself and I agree with my colleagues' comments that it's in pretty good shape now if you walk by there. And I wish every landlord in the city took care of their vacant property in the same way. The lawns were mowed, it was, personally, if I had lived in that area, I'd have been real happy to have somebody come in like Erie Insurance. Proof of that was yesterday as I went around, light up Erie Night there, and people were asking me, "Can Erie buy my property?" Or "Thank them for making my property more valuable." As a disclaimer, I have no gain in this when I do my vote. I'm not even a member of Erie, so I want to say that out front. But I, I would be remiss when, I was a little disappointed when I read the editorials and they were questioning council about questioning the integrity of this company by asking them heavy questions when nobody ever questioned any of the other businesses in town that have done the same thing under different guises. Here they've done it out in the open and everybody wants to question them. The same, the same week we read in the newspaper that we lost a major employer. And today with just two of our votes, we have helped one gentleman with a loan who's bringing more jobs to Erie in the area of the train station. And now we have, everything in the past has showed us that Erie Insurance will not only pay taxes, but provide jobs. That's a no-brainer. So to those members of the media that took umbrance with this, think hard and long about, have you contributed to the area? You know, some of them have moved their operations out of town and other things, but here's a fact, here's a Fortune 500 company that wants to invest, as Mr. Jones said, in an area of the city that has, nobody has touched. My congratulations to them and I will gladly back this project anytime taxes and additional jobs are at the forefront. It's time this city moved forward and started doing proactive things to encourage our local businesses and not look for the home run ball that may or may not come from out of town. So if that, you know, people ain't pleased with that comment, so be it. And once again, thank you, Erie Insurance, and we hope you do more in the future. Rose?
Continuing roll call. Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15600 by A7, Nay Zero, on first reading. And that'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Thank you, Rose. Mr. Winarsky, we'll start with you today.
Thank you, Mr. President. Naturally, I'll be brief. I did attend a number of the, what are they, National Night Out events last night. Unfortunately, I could not make them all, but that's probably a good thing to the extent that it has grown as much as it, as it has over the years. Naturally, I want to thank our local watch groups, the churches are involved, Boys and Girls Club are involved this year. So between the volunteers, the sponsors, just want to thank everybody for making that night a success. Only other comment I want to, mid-year term, naturally, we get some good numbers, it's nice to hear. What I want people to understand is we as a council just don't meet at the end of November with what's presented to us and to vote on this. Once again, like I've said in the past, this is a 12-month, month process and we have our finance meetings, although we may not have it every month, we definitely are kept abreast of our revenues and how things are going and how things are looking. So with that being said, it looks promising at this point. We'll see what follows. We'll digest this a little bit as we've done in the past, but I want to thank for the administration and the department heads for their commitment to help saving us some money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to take a moment to kind of touch on a few things that were brought up through Citizens to Be Heard. Again, I know often it can be somewhat confusing or just unclear in general because it's an event that's hosted in the city and often downtown. The miscommunicate, or the misunderstanding could be that it is actually a city-hosted or city-run event. And so sometimes some of those concerns come to us, as they should, but also there are other venues to, to articulate those, those concerns and those issues that you want to have changed or adjusted to, to make the event better. So again, for example, the Roar on the Shore that was commented on earlier today is a Manufacturers Association event that is actually obviously geographically located downtown Erie, but the planning is through that organization. Again, I've already Again, I've already commented in general previously in the meeting around community benefit agreements. I think they're a great tool and a great asset that we can use to incorporate and include broader parts of the community in the city and have multiple benefit, not just for the business owner or the company that's expanding or the group that's expanding, but for those in that general area around it to, to benefit as well as a community. Though there are several people who are being appointed or reappointed to different authorities on this agenda, and I just, I think it's important because sometimes we forget those are not paid positions, not, not at all in the sense of financial, but it's a, it's a labor of love and a, a position of service. So definitely want to recognize those folks, Mrs. White, Gwendolyn White, and Veronica Rexford, for their willingness to serve and to give their skill set to the community through volunteering at this level. Also, the gentleman that has come up, and this may be, I don't know if this is controversial or not, but just for the sake of conversation and comment, talking about the decriminalizing of marijuana. And however morally or positionally you stand on that, it's, it's worth the conversation in general because what, there are several young people and people of any age, but several people in our prisons that are overrun and overpopulated for small amounts of a substance, albeit in a different form, people are getting ready to make millions of dollars off of. We just change it a little bit, give it opportunity for it to be taxed, and then it's okay. And so I, I think it's, it's an important conversation. I was ironically in Philadelphia in 2014 at a city council meeting when they passed the, the, the local legislation to minim, to minimize the consequence, the criminal consequence of having X amount and lower of marijuana. Again, it's not my thing, but I think it's interesting to have the, we should have appropriate conversation about these types of things because they do directly affect what goes on in our community. There are a lot of young men, and I just say young men, but men and women, a lot of young people, a lot of folks who are incarcerated. I'm in the county prison for the last sixteen years doing mentoring, and there are guys in there who've been in there for months and months, up to a year and a half, for marijuana, minimal, minimal amount of marijuana for personal consumption. Again, I'm not making a judgment on that, but it's for personal consumption and we're, they can't get a job now or they're locked up or they can't pay for their child supporter or they can't be around their kids. And then we passed on this body and they're passing it in the state that we're going to legalize the same substance, albeit in a different form, for other people to make significant amounts of money because we can tax it. So I think it's worthy of having the conversation and seeing how we can absolutely deal with these types of social challenges in a more productive way. So again, I think we do, we are doing a lot of great things in, in this community. And I'll close with this, is that we always hear about the things that are negative or the, the issues that are maybe more sensational because they may be negative or, or dramatic, but we have a lot of very, very significant, positive things that are happening in our community from the business side, business expansion. We saw the press conference at the mayor's office and the mayor gave yesterday about different monies and grants coming in for, for development in the city. We, we were in and had some items on the agenda for business expansion and businesses growing and, and bringing in up to forty new employees to their business. You know, and these are family sustaining wage jobs and, and we need to hear more about that than we do just the fact that such and such is happening on this side of town or such and such is happening and, oh my God, so-and-so company is leaving. It's important to recognize what we do have. We're not going to be blessed by what we lost, we're going to be blessed by what we have and maximizing it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too had a chance to go to National Night Out. I went to quite a few of them, and that's a, that's an awesome, awesome event. You know, that really shows the unity in our community when you go and see how many people comes out to this event. I would like to thank the, the police department, the fire department for also getting to know the people in our community. And I can say this is one day out of the year that I can say we have unity in our community. And a special shout out to all the neighborhood watches, the volunteers, because without them, this wouldn't be possible. And United Way for sponsoring it, you know? So we need to continue to do things like this, not just once a year, we probably need to amp it up to five or six times a year because the more we do it, the more we will unify as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I report.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to put another thank you for the people who came in today for the repository sale. Very caring people and I really liked what, how they were going to, what they're going to do with the properties and for the take care of them. But hopefully more citizens will follow their lead and take care of their property and, you know, help improve all our neighborhoods. I also attended a couple of events for the neighborhood last night, hoping, hopefully attend more, but there's a lot of commitments going on. But it's great to see everybody get together and celebrate the neighborhoods and thank you to everyone who put out the effort to, I know there's a lot of work to put these events together, and I'm definitely looking forward to next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Mr. Mersky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. Like everyone on council, we attended National Night Out last night. The only bad thing about National Night Out is everyone has their events all at the same time and you can't get to all of them. And I apologize to the neighborhood organizations that I was unable to attend. The ones that I did attend were very well-attended, very well-organized, and I'd like to thank the United Way and all the neighborhood groups who got together and, and made this a success for the city. And the citizens were coming out and enjoying each other's company. And that's what community's all about and we're very, very excited about that. And I just wanted to remind everybody that we have a study session tomorrow, an update on Erie Refocused, five-thirty right here in council chambers in the afternoon. Encourage all of you to attend. And just with, with Erie Insurance, I understand the need, you know, for community benefit agreements and, and those are things that we need to discuss and, and move forward. At the same time, I don't want to, I don't want to take the opportunity of advancing a Fortune 500 company in this community and hem it in. And so we, we have to make sure that when people want to bring jobs and want to bring development to this city, we do have to do everything we can to make sure that it's, benefits everybody in the community. But at the same time, you know, this was a zoning change and juxtaposed with that is the fact that they come to an agreement to pay their taxes at a higher rate than, than what they wanted. And, you know, that's a good thing for the, that's a community benefit in and of itself. And I want to thank the administration and the school district and the county for working out that agreement. I think it's, you know, to the benefit of everybody and especially to the benefit of the taxpayers. Because as Erie Insurance grows and other businesses around town fade, we need other companies to grow. And we should be supporting that and not hindering that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mersky. I would just like to say, I like the other councilmen, too many Night Out yesterday. It was hard to make them all. I think I made six or seven and that was about it.
It was like a marathon.
Yeah, you, you're lucky you're in there for ten minutes and you stay alone and you're gone. But I want to thank Mrs. Arrington. She had a wonderful picnic last week, the Mothers Against Teen Violence. Sonia, thank you for your work. I had a good time there. I felt sorry for your husband, he couldn't keep the popcorn going, but those young people, they sure loved it though. So you're doing nice work and I think we need more of it in the community. And I also attended last week, the Hispanic Council had a festival in the park, very well-attended. It was a good time, great food, great entertainment. I hope it grows and grows and I'm going to talk with the administration about helping them out a little bit on certain things. They would, they approached me about such things that celebrate Erie, they want to get more involved. And I, I think it's a good organization and they represent our future. With Mr. Jones's comments about marijuana, I think, yes, we need to look at it. Too many of my generation, many of them veterans, came back from that war and to, to some of those veterans, they can't get jobs today. And, you know, we talk about, one time we banned alcohol, now that's legal because we tax it. We banned gambling when I was a young man, now that's legal and it's all okay. And same thing with marijuana someday, that'll be taxed and it'll be okay. But we have to figure, how do we bring back the lives that we destroyed, the people that really didn't do anything that terribly wrong compared to today's problems? So I think it merits looking at. And finally, my last comment about the rezoning, I, I hate to sit up here and pontificate all the time, but this is not the time for this community to be questioning development by major players in the Erie market when we're looking for jobs and we're looking for tax revenue. And when you have a company that's done everything right up to now, and I, I don't see the purpose in questioning them to the nth degree. They came here many years ago and gave us a master plan and it's still out there and it's always subject to change, just like many of the other big industries, Gannon, Hammett, Vincent, all of them, they all change from time to time. So if I can help these companies in my term as council, I will. Because I think we have to start looking at the future we leave, leave to our kids and our grandchildren. And we, we got to quit looking for the home run ball that's not going to come from out of town. One last comment, a young gentleman there, the scout, were you here today to get a merit badge?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to introduce yourself or?
Okay. I'm a star scout, David Carroll, here with my good friends and fellow star scouts, Ellen Holland, and we're both here in support of the community merit.
Thank you for coming and keep up the good work. You are. Our controller?
Next week, just to let everybody know, there'll be an investment committee and an aggregate board meeting I'll be attending that'll give us the results in the second quarter of the pension funds. And with the way the market's been going, I think you'll be pretty pleased with, with how the funds are doing. So I'll have that at our next council meeting for you.
Thank the committees for their good work. And administration?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. The administration, police chief, fire chief, all of us were out at National Night Out last night as well, ran into many of you folks. I mean, it's a great community event. We certainly thank the United Way for the many grants that they open up to the neighborhood watch organizations. I mean, it's a great opportunity again to get out and, and see the kids and, and meet the families and, and meet the people right in your neighborhood. So we certainly enjoyed ourselves last evening at, at that event. This past Monday was the last of our Sounds of Summer series. I would just like to thank our local banking partners, PNC, First National Bank, Key Bank, Erie Bank, Marquette, and Northwest Bank for their financial support of the small concerts that we bring to folks like St. Mary's East and the Housing Authority complexes. They really enjoy coming out even for an hour to listen to music and to bring people, new faces to their, to their lives. So I certainly thank the banking partners, the musicians, and the housing, senior housing complex managers and those folks for welcoming us. And it's, it's been a great run and it's.
Nice crowd last Monday.
It was a nice crowd at St. Mary's East, yes. It was a beautiful night as well. So thank you for coming and thank you for the support.
Jill, thank the fire department. I was at Nineteenth and Myrtle last night and they got a call during the, it, their speed and rapidity that they went to the, was amazing.
Most of the firefighters had to leave the National Night Out to, to fight, I don't know if it was that, was that specific fire, but there, there were a couple of calls last evening, so the rigs were, were pulled out. But I, I think they were headed back, last that I heard.
And Mr. Carley, thank you for your help today in the ordinance with Erie Insurance. Would you like to say anything or?
I'm going to try to avoid appearing on YouTube, so no report.
Mr. President, I know we're going to adjourn. I would be remiss and out of line and even disrespectful if I didn't recognize my father is in the crowd who's not just my dad. That's not his greatest.